That is... That particular, um, chart does not reflect the decrease in what you're suggesting.
No, it does not.
It does not? Does it reflect the decreases, only six million in each other department?
Yes, sir.
And can... okay, good. So for, uh, social services, which is a big part of it, can you be given a ballpark of how much that was decreased?
Well, the, the social services budget is established by the state of Virginia and has not been decreased. It is based on what was submitted to us by the state of Virginia. And it is approximately a hundred thousand dollars more than what it was last year.
Law enforcement, I know some of it's state funded, but how much of the law enforcement budget was cut out about?
Approximately half a million dollars.
Half a million? And, uh, the Commonwealth attorney?
Commonwealth attorney budget was, was increased to reflect the increases in budget or in salaries that was requested by, uh, the Commonwealth attorney's office.
Of the thirteen percent for social services, did we reduce that any?
No, we did not.
All right. Uh, and you say law enforcement was cut about five hundred thousand. Regional jail, we can't cut that?
We can't cut that.
But we always get some back at the year end, every year I've been here. But they over... which is good to be overestimated and owe your back.
Most of the time, most of the time, we didn't. There have been years that we have short followed.
And how much was cut out in the landfill budget?
Uh, approximately three hundred thousand.
Three?
I thought, uh, Wise Library was confident. We had the school board give it that up at that time. Am I not misunderstood?
Well, it, it is a little different than what we had previously discussed. We thought we were going to be around six hundred and fifty thousand. It ended up being nine hundred and forty-four. And that was due to the, um, part of that was due to social services. Part of it was due to, uh, just rectifying everything the way that it needed to be to, to reflect everything in the general fund as opposed to the...
I guess I missed something somewhere. You had indicated that six million had been, there had been six million cuts other than the school board. And I'm not even at a million right now. So where did all that come from?
I mean, it came from every department. We, we have, we, when we got the original budget, what you're looking at is what, is what we call, uh, phase four, P4, which was the fourth rendition of the budget. The original budget was what was requested by the departments. We have taken that and cut it down approximately six million dollars to get to the point where we are today, to try to, to bring a, a budget that we thought we could work with the board on to, to get to a, a final budget.
So the sheriff's office in the landfill were both the biggest areas that there were cuts?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any more room in there? Are you down to the blood yet?
I, I think we, we are down in most departments to where if we did anything else, it would require eliminating personnel.
I heard you say that even if the school board was cut to nine hundred and forty-four, that the raises would still be funded? That there was something else you said would be funded?
Right. And one thing we need to, we, we need to realize too is the amount of money that the state is putting into the raises is approximately fifty percent.
Yes.
Of, of the raises. So there should be sufficient money left in their budget based on what I've seen of their budget to, to cover those even with the nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollar decrease.
There was one other item you said that would still be funded.
The three percent increase for county employees. Well, the question I've got on the three percent increase for county employees, how does that, uh, how, how does that increase on insurance balance out against the three percent increase?
Well, for, for the personnel who have, uh, insurance, it would probably take one percent or a little, one to one and a half percent of the, of their increase would go towards covering the insurance. The people who don't have it obviously would get the full three percent.
Any other questions?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
When, when we were talking last week about the budget, I thought you said that we were the nine hundred and some thousand short, but that you had figured out a way to cover six hundred thousand of it. And that if, if we wound up cutting the school with three hundred and fifty, then that would leave us another little bit to cover there. What?
That, that is the next conversation. That is fiscal year nineteen budget that we want to discuss when we discuss appropriations.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are we going to line by line, Madam Chairman?
Does the board want to go line by line?
I don't.
I do.
I do not want to go line by line.
What do you want to do, Fred?
Judge, can you holler at it, buddy? Can you do the Reader's Digest version?
I can dry her up and get it with my... do it one-on-one.
That's why we've had a short time really to, to look at this budget.
Line by line, by lines.
So I can understand the board needing more time to reflect that.
I would, I would be glad to sit down with Judge and go with this, or any of the board members and go over one-on-one.
Help me understand then. On page one, the revenues. Real estate, three cents increase. Personal property, three cents increase. Mobile homes, three cent increase. Basically, it's talking about three cent increase, and then it drops down and talks about personal property, two cents, mobile home, two cents. So I get three cents there. Then on page seven. It's three cents for real estate, three cents for personal property, three cents for mobile homes, three cents for, I guess that's public service. And then on page nine, there's a two cent increase, uh, for real estate, personal property. Three cents, three cents, and two cents. That's eight cents. I don't, we, the board passed a seven cent increase. I don't, maybe I don't understand how these numbers came together, but why do we have three cents on one page, three cents on another page, and then two cents for a total of eight cents?
It should be a total of seven cents, and that is part of what I have worked with the finance director to correct, and why it's showing up more in the general fund now. It is a seven cent increase that's reflected for the fifty-six million, seven hundred and eleven thousand that we are showing for the general fund.
My, I guess my bottom line's going to be I have to have a whole new package if there's this, this kind of changes. But I will make one other question. In a lot of these line items, or I guess departments, categories through here, there was significant reduction in capital outlay. Now, there was one or two where there was additional costs to capital outlay, but for the most part, what I saw was a reduction. Are we putting off things that's going to bite us in the future? Are these legitimate postponements that we can postpone capital improvement projects without hurting this board? Um, I'd like to know what line by line, what those capital cuts were or increases, what they're for. They were pretty significant through here, and I'm just concerned that if we put them off or we push them on down in the future for another tax rate.
No. What we have done is in the, in the past, what we've done is just roll over recommendations from one year to the next on what the capital outlay was. So we went through line by line with each of the departments and took out what didn't have to be done, took out what could be postponed to a different, to a later date. But in doing that, we also looked at future dates on things that hadn't been done. And then we also took out things that had already been done. There were still things within capital outlay that had been completed but didn't get removed. So we went through with each department, and, uh, the things that we postponed are, most of which were nice things to have, but not necessarily required. Therefore, we, we've either postponed them or just completely deleted them.
And with that work, and I know one of them that caught my eye was the library, capital outlay for the library. And I know a couple of years ago, the Wise Library, and even the library, because they had requests that we postponed. So if we postponed some of the requests in the past, now again this year, we're postponing some. I'd like to see what each one of those capital outlay projects are, whether they were incurred or decreased. I'd like a detailed report to see what's happening.
Specifically for the library, they had something that had already been completed on their capital outlay plan that we took off. They had thirty-five thousand dollars in their capital outlay plan for re-roofing the Wise Library, and it had already been done. Therefore, we took that out of the capital outlay plan. So I know that one specifically because we addressed it.
This would increase the budget, but as I read these line items, on social services, we're not doing anything with that building. We've got, it's just like the school building. We've got a building sitting there that we're saying is not inhabitable. The county can't use it, but yet we're not proposing to do anything with it. Now, in the conversation on relocating social services, we had a recommendation from a firm that that building could be demolished for a hundred thousand dollars. That's a cost that we're pushing down in the future if we don't address it now. And I didn't say it addressed in this budget. Um, I think we should look at things like that. Uh, we've got, there was even, uh, in that particular budget, there was expenses for electricity. Um, if we don't have the building, we don't have that five hundred dollars expense for electricity every year, uh, plus insurance costs. I just think we need to look at what are we going to do with that building? Are we just going to let it sit there like we are a high school building? Are we going to do something with it? When are we going to do something? This year, or are we going to push it down the road?
What, what I have anticipated with the demolition of the, uh, the Pound High School, the social services building, and with the jail, is that, that based on the amount of money that, that we budgeted, the demolition of those three structures could be included with whatever project we did for social ser... or for county offices in the future. So, uh, and that's, that's approximately six hundred thousand dollars would be included in that budget for that to be part of, and to be part of the project. So I think we're looking at about two years down the road before we tear those down.
But it's in the tax increase, it's in that seven cent tax increase. We're waiting two years to do it.
Yes, sir.
As part of my comment about raising taxes, let's do it when we need it, not before.
Okay.
One of the...
Chairman, I still have more questions.
Let me ask one question. One of the things about the plan was that we'd go ahead and raise the taxes and sort of build up a cushion for the projects.
That is correct.
But if we're putting two cents to social services, a total increase with all these different areas where we increase taxes, that is going to give us three hundred sixty thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-five cents per penny. You multiply that times two, uh, we're at over seven hundred thousand dollars. Social services is going to pay two-thirds of the cost for their, I think the estimate was twenty-three thousand square feet that they need. So in addition to almost three-quarters of a million, social services is going to pay for their space that they're going to utilize. So rapidly, we're getting up over, probably close to two million dollars, uh, that we're going to have in one year. It may be two years from now before they actually occupy that building and start paying, but we're still going to have a two-cent tax increase. I just got a problem overall, I guess. If I could ask another question, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
The three cent across the board for county employees, does that include the people that work our elections, that work the polls? Are they getting an increase? And I didn't know whether that was in the registrar's office or whether, I forget, there was two different areas where I thought that may be absorbed, and there was an increase in both, but I didn't know. Are, are local officials that work elections, are they getting an increase this year with this budget?
Yes, sir.
Is our electoral board doing the same thing?
Yes, and the electoral board is dictated by the state and what they, and what they receive, and there, there is an increase in there that was dictated by the state for that poor board.
Do we know what that comparison is? Is we're giving the county three cents, which they're paying what, a hundred and fifty dollars per poll worker now? Three cents, that's not a lot of increase. What percent is the state giving the electoral board?
I think it is higher than the three percent. I, I don't remember what it is exactly, but it was definitely higher than three percent.
I'd like to see those poll workers get twenty-five dollars or something increase. It's hard to get poll workers anymore. So I think anything we could do as an incentive to help them would be good. And I guess tagging on what John asked about the three cent increase for county employees versus what the cost for insurance is, I would like to see us try to find a way to pay that insurance cost for employees. Madam Chairman, that all?
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Michael, did you, did you discuss these decreases with each, uh, office, like health department or the social service? You talked each one of those directors or whoever was responsible for those offices. As you cut these, as you reduced these budgets, is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
The next thing I want to say, I really appreciate what, I know where you've been and I know what you've done preparing these budgets. I know how hard you've worked, how difficult it is. I think you've done a great job. I make the motion approve the budget.
Say.
Now, we've got to put off a public hearing.
Wait.
Before we do that.
He made a motion on the floor. We have to deal with it, right? Any discussion? Bobby says we can't...
There's a motion in second, but I think that it would be a motion to set a public hearing on the budget.
Well, it was a motion to adopt the budget, so.
Well, should we, I would like to...
You withdraw your motion.
Yes, ma'am.
And Bob, you're okay with him withdrawing his motion?
And I have another one.
Okay.
That we go to public hearing. Is that what you said? Vote.
So Bob and, Bobby and Bob, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
I've got one question. And I had to do with, um, trying to find it. I noticed that it, see, I don't know what page it is because I couldn't work it, but cable TV was, uh, not even budgeted.
That is, that is correct. I'd been requested by the majority of the board members to remove it from the budget. So I didn't...
I think that's a mistake. I do. It's cutting into letting the public know what's going on.
And that's small enough that we can change that after we set up a public hearing?
We, we can change the bu... the budget by an increase of up to one percent.
That motion is coming.
That, I had that same mark, it seemed like it's twenty-three thousand, that's what we're cutting out, so.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I can't vote for the motion. Um, I feel like there's been significant changes from what I have reviewed this weekend to what I've been presenting today. I don't feel comfortable in doing it. I also am opposed to taking the full nine hundred and forty-four thousand from the school board against a lot of funding. And then there's other areas such as cutting the TV channel. I just don't, I can't approve it, I'm sorry. I can't even vote to set it out for public hearing. I think we need more discussion.
Any other comments?
I guess when it goes up to nine hundred and, what, forty thousand?
Forty-four.
Forty-four. That's, that's different from what I, I guess I envisioned it caused. I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to tell the public that we're for education when we cut that much. And that's part of the strongest, that's our, uh, framework, that's your, for your economic growth, I mean, in the county, and for kids to be able to change that. I don't know what, what, I'd like to see what it's going to do to the school system. I want them to know what, what they want to cut. I'm not hurting anything yet, but I would love to hear what, what they need, what they're going to cut, because I, I, I think it's very important we, uh, see what they will cut, because, you know, they're in need of aid, and, and you've got to continue to buy buses because, you know, they're, they're behind on that. Um, I guess I don't see, I want to understand what, what they're going to cut. What, what can they do? Can they take this cut without cutting people or cutting, you know? I just hate to see anything that would hurt the school system, because, I mean, we're doing good right now. A great job in our school system. And I don't know how to go out and tell people that I'm for education and I'm telling, we raised taxes seven percent, and then we're going to say we're going to cut the school system nine hundred and forty-four thousand. I guess it's a, it's very hurt... It's, uh, hard to take right now. I didn't know it was going to be that much. It's a lot to study about, you know?
Well, Steve, last year, the auditors reported to us that they, they had extra money, and they took that extra money left over from last year, and they paid over eight hundred thousand in pre-pays, and they were, they wrote checks and, and held those checks until they cleared until mid-November. That was a million, too.
I know.
And so we can't continue to let them prepay things over a million dollars every year. So, so they just won't be able to prepay things if we cut. We have been overfunding them, or they wouldn't have had those types of prepays that you're in. So, and we don't prepay our expenses. Our prepays were eighty thousand last year, while theirs was over eight hundred thousand. And that's a big difference. We don't, we don't have the money, and we lose the interest when it's pulled out of the checking account and pre, you use prepays, and some of those things were prepaid through , uh, year twenty-one, so.
And we could have kept that money in our fund.
So I think that they, they need to be good stewards of the money.
I agree.
And, and there's nothing, I would never do anything to jeopardize those teachers getting a raise. And what I thought they should have done with that money instead of paying prepaid was out here all the time, they don't have supplies in the classroom, they don't have aids. They had the money for supplies and aids and did not use it. We can't make them buy supplies for those classrooms. Uh, so I don't think that, I don't see that we're negatively affecting them. And that's my thoughts on it.
I agree with what they did was wrong. I mean, you know, that can, I think we all can agree on that. I think...
I agree. I don't think what they did was wrong.
But, well, I, I don't think you should pay, prepay something, write checks, and then not pay for it six months later.
Two years before it comes due.
That should be changed, and I'm hoping they can deal with that, you know, that it won't happen to you.
But when you have a...
Eric, I'm sorry, John.
When, when you have a, a nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollar, uh, deficit there, and you say, we're going to take that from the schools, that, that looks pretty, pretty bad when you say you're going to cut them almost a million dollars. And I'm like Steve, I'd like to see where they were going to cut that from.
Well, there's one thing, Madam Chairman, if I could say one thing. For the past several years, we've cut every department. We have, we've cut some of them to the bottom to the point that they don't have anything left, and we haven't touched the school system a lot.
Bobby, now, it's not true, but every year, we can cut five hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand back for last year, the last two, three years. We can go back and sell, or we've cut, well, I voted that, we all voted, I even voted. I'm an educator, you are too, and I can remember voting for those times that we cut five hundred thousand several times.
What we...
Seven hundred thousand. That's why I said I'm a warrior, hitting the school system every year, you know, we can hit other people, too. And then finally, we finally did something good last year, you know, and I told them, but I, and I did, I said that that probably would be one of the times they need to keep the money, because it's going to be hard times, it's going to be hard for them to get money anymore. I, I guess I didn't think about, we're saying about almost taking back what we gave them, I mean, you know? Because, you know, I feel like sometimes when you say we're punishing them because they did something wrong, and we're going, because you did a bad thing, we'll say to you, have it back for, you know, take my, I, you know, I don't look this, look at either.
Then if you're not willing to do some of that, then you might as well be willing to go for an increase in the tax, another increase, because we can't, we can't run deficits.
Well, I can tell you this, from what we met mid-last week, people, everybody wants something, but nobody wants taxes. I mean, that's what I got from it. Everybody keeps complaining about wanting, I need this, I need that. Yes, we need a lot, but hey, you get it, it's raising taxes. If people want these things, then they're going to have to accept the taxes. I can, I mean, I'm, it doesn't bother me a bit paying more, because I know I'm getting service, I'm getting better service, and I'm updating what we've got. And we need to update. We need, we've got to change what we're thinking this camp. And we can, we're falling behind, and we've got to be willing to pay for what we want.
Any other comments from anybody?
Couple of comments, Madam Chairman. The auditors, last year when they gave us the report, this year, I guess, on last year's budget, um, it's my understanding that part of the bills that was paid later for the school board is because, and I think the specific example were lockers. They were the wrong lockers to start with, they had to reorder, get the right lockers, then they were installed wrong. And why should we be paying upfront before June first, even though we had the commitment? They had the money in their budget. They advertised bids, awarded the bids, but they wasn't the right equipment, they wasn't installed properly. That's the reason that payment wasn't made till in October. And to me, that's good management. That's why I can, I can say I can agree with that they did something. That's why I can, I can say I can agree with that they did something wrong last year. The auditors pointed something out, but if you look in the details of what went on, then I think the school board was appropriate in the way they handled payment in some of those situations.
Point was they wrote a check and they laid somewhere for five and a half months.
Mm-hmm.
It could have been earning interest, and it was over, it was close to 500,000 in, in checks that did not clear until after mid-November. And they should have never, you don't write an, you don't pay for anything, write a check until you're satisfied with a deliverable product, and then you would cut a check.
They didn't make payment. It may not have been in the treasurer's office so that interest could have been collected by the name. That check was not cashed.
It should have never been written until.
Insufficient equipment.
Proven receipt.
Insufficient installation of equipment. The other question I have is on page five of our revenues. The very last item there says prior period appropriation fund balance. And it's showing that we're carrying forward this year from 2019 to 2020 fiscal year budget, a profit of $3 million. But yet, we're told that we're short. I don't see how this line item can show an increase of $3 million, and we're told we're short. Can't understand.
You want to answer that, Ray?
It, it is not a profit of $3 million. We are taking money out of our fund balance to help our revenue for next year to create the fund that we're talking about for the school debt. And I, and I can show you here in a minute with the, with the next line item. We, we do not have a profit or a carryover of 3, 3 million or 3 and a half million or anything. We are short this year in the revenues that we have projected.
That's not what I see on page five, and then in addition to that.
Wait just a minute, let's address this before we go on. What I understand from talking to accounting is that they decided they're gonna set up a separate fund and not keep that, that, that was a 3 and a half million that we had reserved for school debt, and it's going in a fund called Debt Service Fund. So they're moving it from one line, they're, that's just a move from one line item to another. Now, I prefer that we don't do that, that's one of my problems. But it's not spending it, I mean, it's just, we're caking it and putting it in another fund, caking it out of, uh, it's now, it's, it's a, it's a, what is it called? It's not a reserve, it's a, it's not a contingent.
Committed.
It's committed, committed, committed. They keep changing the name of what we call things in the, in the fund balance. But it's a committed fund, but we're putting it in a separate fund so it can be easily looked at and see, make sure that we have that money set aside and we've not spent it.
And I saw that in expenditures, that was clear, and I personally didn't have a problem with that.
Yeah. What comes over?
But this on page five is revenues, and it's in the revenue, and it specifically showing fiscal year 2019, it's 457,927 dollars. And then this year is 3 and a half million, which gives us 3 million carried forward.
Okay. If you go over, if you go to, just a sec, if you go to, over to that school fund that they set up, you'll see that there's a transfer into that school fund. I have to find the page.
I saw that, I, I.
And that's where it ends up in that school fund, is where it's, it, if the amount that hit the school fund as the transfer was the current year debt service payment plus this 3 million by. And, and you, and it was, I mean, I mean, I teach this stuff, but I spent hours trying to find the, the, the both sides of the equation, you know, the entries, so.
I, I saw that clearly, but this particular page to me doesn't reflect that, and that's, to me, that's apples and oranges. Maybe that's me.
What, what, what those numbers are, the 457,000, I believe it was, where, was money that was taking, taken out of the fund balance last year to help meet our, to balance our budget. And the 3.5 million that we were taking out this year is going towards the debt service. It's not that we had excess money, it's we're taking money out of the fund balance to make those things happen.
Okay, then, we just had a 7 cent tax increase. Some people have already paid that 7 cent increase for this May bill. That's money that we had not appropriated last year, it's not in this, so that's additional money coming into our coffers this year. In this fiscal year, in 19, because we're collecting them forward by the end of June. Where is that reflected in this revenue, in this revenue budget?
It, the, the 7 cents is in the individual line items for those.
For the revenue.
For the revenue, for the individual revenues.
Damn.
Now, and again, we can, we can talk about, 5 cents of that 7 cents is dedicated towards other items. So only 2 cents that's coming in, in April, is helping to offset the, the shortfall that we have. The other, but the, for the revenues coming in next year, it's up to all 7 cents is reflected in there, but 5 of it is being dedicated to other funds.
Are you saying 5 cents is dedicated in this, the FY19 budget?
Yes, sir.
5 cents?
5 cents is going towards debt service for the schools and for the.
Which is an.
Facilities.
That's an increase of about 1.6 million dollars. Based on what? Based on what a penny brings in, a penny bringing in 360,930 dollars?
You only get half of that, that's a penny per year.
And then that's 3/4 of a million. That's 750,000 being brought in.
Okay, let's let the lawyers have a second to be here.
One thing I just wanted to bring out, on that 5 cents, 7 cents, with what you're looking at on page one, you can see there's 3 cents. The first three categories is 3 cents, the second three is 2 cents. That's your 5 cents that they are wanting to move to another fund. For the debt service is, is the 3, and, and the other was 2. That's your 5%. The other 2% of the 7 cents is down here in your other revenues.
On page 3.
Okay, so we're allocating, or she's allocating for the 2% down here in your regular general fund revenues. But they want to move out this 5% into another fund. That's the, that's the reserves that you're talking about. Now, the 2% that we're going to have in this year's budget, and I'll show that in a presentation that I'm going to do here for you. Where you're only going to collect about 90% of that 2%, but it's also only a half, for a half a year. So it's around 189,000 for real estate and about 140,000, I think off the top of my head, for the public service corporation. So you're talking about it, actually around 350,000. That's going to be the 2% that you're going to be applying to the current year budget.
The year ended 2019.
2019. The other 5% of that, you've already men, are committed to put into that other fund, so we're not going to be spending that. You're, they're gonna move it over just as soon as it comes in to me.
Moving it over to where?
Well, to these other funds. They're gonna be moving it out of your spendable general fund over into the committed funds. So you're only going to be spending the 2%, and that's only a portion, you know, you're only gonna collect 90% of half of that bill.
Page 7 is where, she had negative numbers on page one.
Right, she's moving it out there.
She took it out. And she had those negative numbers to reduce totals tax.
Tax.
So if you look on page 7, she set up a new fund, 150, and then on page 9, it's fund number 170. That is for 2 cents, and the 150 is a 3 cent. That's your 5 cents. And that money, as it comes into my office, then they will be moving it over to these funds, so it won't be reflected as revenue in your general fund. It'll be in this fund, one, which is fund number 110. They'll be moving it over to fund 150 and 170. And page 7, that, we've got the 3 cents going into that account, plus we have a transfer from other funds, and that is that general fund balance of 3.5 plus the current year bond payments.
The 3 million.
I know.
Which gets us up to the 6 million.
I know.
Yeah.
So that's where that comes from.
And all that's doing really is just moving money around.
Well, shifting it, they're.
That's all that's doing.
And, but she wants to do that so she can keep her eyes on it and make sure it doesn't get lost in the whole budget.
And I understand that.
Normally, we, we set up special revenue funds. We have about 30 of them on the books right now, so that the balance is always carried over. General fund does not do that, it doesn't keep that balance. So this is her, their way of making sure that we know as going forward, because all the general fund revenues will close out at the end of the year. Part of the accounting process, so once it's closed out, the balance is gone of what was in there. So this is her way of setting it over in another fund, so from year to year, we'll be able to see what it was in that fund, instead of mixed in the general fund.
If I might, this is, the intent of this is to comply with the intent of Robbie's motion.
Right.
When, when we approved the, the increase, was to set aside specific funds so that anybody looking at our budget will know that 150 is set up for, for school debt only. 170 is set up for debt for a new facility for the county. And that, that's the purpose of those, is, is moving money around, but it's so that we can track it easier and so that anybody looking at it is gonna look at it and say, oh, okay, that, that's dedicated to the school debt, or that's dedicated to the building debt.
One more issue is that 3.5 million, and I'm just going to remember from the Davenport, um, report that they gave us. I think we were supposed to pay on the debt when we do the new, when they go out for the new debt. Are we paying down a certain amount? Wasn't that part of that?
That was a part of it.
Process. That's where I thought this 3 and a half million was actually going, would be what we're paying to the debt when we refinance it.
Well, that was the, I assume that was the debt that we had reserved for school debt?
It was, but we were having to use it to go ahead and restructure that debt, was what we were looking at doing. So therefore, we have to pull the fund balance that we have committed already over to that fund to go ahead and pay that debt with. I think that's what this is.
I'll let my thoughts to the person.
My response to that lengthy conversation is, we have a fund set up for our school debt of 4 and a half. Well, it started out 7 million, and we drew it down to basically 4 and a half, and then this time last year, we took a half a million out of it. So even though you got it in separate categories, the board can vote to take money from one place and spend it somewhere else. So I understand what you're doing, it, it doesn't lock anything in time.
Well, no, there, there is no way with having future boards that you can lock it in time, unless there was a state mandate that we do it, and there's not, state or federal mandate. So this is the best alternative that we could come up with, to at least say, this is what it's there for. If, if they get into this money as a future board, then they will know that they are getting into this money.
Any other questions? Any discussion? We have a motion on the floor. I haven't forgotten it. So I guess we need to take a vote on it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let me have a show of hands.
Madam Chairman, we may need a roll call.
Yeah, let's do a roll call.
This is for public hearing, right?
This is to set it for public hearing.
And it can be changed.
It can be changed within 4 percentage.
1%.
1%. It's a big budget.
Then I have a question. If we do that, if we advertise it, then our next meeting would be, I guess I'm wondering if we, that 944,000 really bothers me, taking it from the school. So if we have to adjust it by more than 1%, do we have to advertise it for another two weeks before we can make another change? How much time are we getting into before the end of June?
And if I, if I may, it's, we cannot increase it by more than 1%, if I'm correct.
You can, the budget, but you can increase it by 1%.
You can decrease it as much as you want to, so that if we base it on the projected revenue, we would have to increase the revenue projection by more than 1% in order to.
Let's go back to what your first slide, how you, over here.
Okay.
Okay, first, no, not that, the second slide. Okay, now, on this motion, we're saying that we're not gonna leave it like that unbalanced. We're gonna cut the school board, that 944. Is that your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we have, we can have a public hearing for whatever we have to do, put it up to it. We don't want to be here till.
Can you withdraw that and state that completely, so we won't have a problem with this motion? You withdraw, and, and Bob, you agree to him withdraw? Okay, so we don't have a motion on the floor. Now, do you want to put your motion on the floor?
I make a motion that we, what is it, put the budget out for public hearing, we this is a.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. At our next meeting, whatever that is. And is that, is it presented today?
As is.
No, as it, that is what he present, that we, to balance the budget, that we reduce the school board budget for that 944.
We have to get to somewhere where we can talk about it.
That's correct.
But, but, do, do one way or the other? We say you're all asking questions about, what about this, and that? You take 944,000 dollars and give it back from schools, who are you gonna cut that 944, as you gonna cut it out of the shirt? Are you gonna cut it out of social services or the health department? Where are you gonna get that 944,000 to put this money back in to the school system? Because you said this is all the money we have.
So you're proposing that that comes from the school board?
But that's my, that's my.
Motion.
But, but, I mean, what's in that, where it comes from, you, you, if you're gonna reduce something, you gotta take it from someone, or you gotta increase it. You can't just, it can't be avoided with this, with this presentation.
Okay, and Bob, you second that? Say second.
I second.
Okay. We need, we need something on the tape when it comes out. Okay, is that motion sufficient?
I understand this would be a public hearing in our next meeting, June 13th, here in this room.
Yes.
And we understand the motion.
Jay, I have a question, what happens if the motion fails?
Then we'll deal with that when, if it passes or fails right now. But we've gotta get the motion cleared out first. Okay, yes.
One question, do we intend to meet again? I, I know we, we have to advertise for public hearing within a certain timeframe, but do we intend to meet like this again to discuss the new figures that Mike is gonna put together? Are we gonna do that or not?
His new figures are in this, all but for that 900 goes, it's the final other than the 900. We can meet with him individually and ask questions and look at, you know, and clarify things about the budget.
I know, Jay, I had more questions about some changes that were incorporated in the papers that we have here. Are you gonna have one on one with Mike, or are we gonna come together and discuss the changes that you want to talk about?
I would, I would think if we put this out for public hearing, we won't come back till June for the public hearing.
If the board votes tonight, there's no need for me to waste my time.
I'm sorry?
If we vote, if the board votes to put this out to public hearing, there's no need for me to come back and waste Mike's time on discussing these line items that I had questions about. And what we were given does not match what's up here. So there's no way that we have had adequate time to evaluate the information we presented to what we were given tonight. And that always bothers me. Just like that, you items to every board meeting.
Jay, why don't you make such a deep motion?
Well.
Let's just vote on this one, see if it's.
Let's vote on this, and let's see if it'll pass or fail on any. If this is what the board wants, then not just one board member.
That doesn't mean it's gonna, that's gonna pass when we, at the public hearing. You can make this and I'll make this.
We don't know what the school board's gonna say, they haven't heard this.
Well, I'm planning on tying that between now and.
They, they meet tomorrow night. But you can only increase. But you can only increase one percent. So you're talking about increasing five hundred and sixty thousand? Which would be close to two-thirds of that nine forty-four. But then, like Bobby says, you still have to find somewhere to pick up that five hundred and sixty.
We have to cut somewhere.
Is, is anybody at this table thinking that we can plug back into the school board that four nine forty-four? Is anybody thinking that we can do that? I, I know we have heartburn with pulling it out, but where would we find it? If we plugged it back into the school here?
Good question.
If they know that we're pulling that, I would like them to have an opportunity to come to us and tell us where that they can take.
Come to us and make adjustments to their budget.
And we're not going to have time to do that. We're just going to have public hearing June the thirteenth to go on. We're not giving them any input dollars, saying we're doing this to you. And I guess it's what Mike has done to the department's cut the six million dollars. I just have a heartburn with it. I just can't approve.
Okay, any, are we go, ready to vote? Roll call, let's roll call. We were starting once.
Supervisor Castle?
Yes.
Supervisor Atkins?
Yes.
Supervisor Lunsford?
Yes.
Supervisor Bates? Supervisor Rivers?
No.
Supervisor Schoolcraft?
No.
Vice Chairman Robbins?
Yes.
Chairman Kilgore?
Yes. So we will have that. Yes, you can, you can comment.
I would like to see this PowerPoint presentation sent to me, and I would like revise revenue and expenditures provided.
And I think we all would like to have that.
I, I will revise the budget to reflect the change in the nine hundred forty-four thousand, and I will send that out to all the board members tomorrow.
And a copy of what you were sending out for public hearing?
Yes.
And I want a copy of the...
Revenue, he doesn't have revenue.
Revenue, I don't have a copy of the revenue.
Okay, it was emailed to you on... That's the only way that I had. I just had... Okay, yes, it, it, some of the packages went out before the revenue, and I didn't realize that. I will get you that also.
It doesn't start quarterly, appropriate issues. I'd like to have a copy of this one.
I, I will, I will make sure that everybody gets a hard copy and a digital copy of everything.
Okay, then we'll need to move on, and we've got the appropriations, the fourth quarter, the next time. And as Laura's to do her presentation, brush.
That, that would probably be better if she did.
And I surely would like, just speaking off the cuff, to make the print one tad hair larger. What went wrong? I've got the same glasses that I had last week, and all of a sudden I was blind during...
The print up there or on the paper?
On the paper.
Oh, oh, I don't think you can make, this is...
That's, that's a report from Keystone. I, I don't think we can.
We can't launch that, Bob, I'm sorry. Just have to bring the reading light just a bit stronger.
I've got some.
Press my one.
Madam Chairman, before she begins, I, I do have one question. We, we could, with the timeframe that we have, have the public hearing on June the sixth, and then have everything else on our regularly scheduled meeting on the thirteenth. If you would prefer to do that, or we can stick with June the thirteenth for a public hearing.
Well, we'll think about that when she does her presentation.
Okay, thank you all for coming for us today. As I handed out, it's, it's just a cash investment presentation to show you where we're at as of April thirtieth. So basically, what this is going to show is just the different accounts that I have, and how much money is in each one. If you look on the first page, you'll see there's a column for checking, money market, CDs, Virginia investment pools, and total investments in cash. So just to kind of go down, if you look at the, one, two, three, fifth column over, is just your investment. That's money market, CDs, and Virginia investment pools. Those add up to the, at the bottom of the thing, you'll see eleven million oh ninety-nine, five forty. That's what I have sitting in investments, maybe short-term, maybe some long-term. If you add that with the cash balance, which is in the negative right now, we, we've actually got ten million seven hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Basically, that schedule, it's just showing you month by month, how our cash flow has went. We started out on June thirtieth at nineteen million, seven sixty-one, twenty-two eighty-nine, and now we're at ten million, seven forty-two. So we're down about nine million dollars.
And that's normal because of the collection cycle.
Right, and if you flip the page, you'll, you'll see I did a little comparison with last April to this April, of where we were at. And you can see where we actually had fourteen million, ten thousand, seven thirty-eight last year in April, and we're on, and we're down to ten million, seven forty-two, three fifty-eight. Basically, where that is, and I'll show you at the bottom, that's basically, we didn't get the tax tickets out till late in April this year. So we had collected three million, four hundred and forty-three thousand last year in April. We did not get to collect, I only collected a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in April. So that's on, the three and a half million dollars were down right there, but we expect to pick it back up in May. It's just that we were like, you know, so late getting the rates approved and the tax tickets mailed out. Okay, but I want to go, to go back up, you can see where our total cash investments is the ten million, seven forty-two, three fifty-eight. We've got debt reserve, and these are those, what we've been discussing. The debt reserve is at four million, one thirty-three, three sixty-six. And the budget reserve, these are all that you have made the, committed funds on, at five million, twelve, eight sixty-nine. So that means out of the cash that I have in the bank right now, we've only got a million, five ninety-six, one twenty-three that we can legally spend. Okay? If you look in the next two months, we would have public schools, and these are what you've already, just the big ticket items that you've already, you know, that we, that is in our budget. Three million, seven forty-seven, two fifty-eight that school has not brought down. Six hundred and eighteen thousand, five oh seven is landfill and silver that we obligated to transfer over for their operations. And social service, just the local share, is three hundred and twelve thousand, seven fifty-two for the next two months. So you can see that would put us, if we, if we spent everything that we have promised in just those categories, we would be in the hole by three million, eighty-two thousand dollars. That doesn't include the rest of all we're spending as far as all the other departments and stuff in the general fund. So, so taking that at where it's at, at three million, eighty-two in the hole, if you look down, now you see the estimated collections. We, now, just for comparison purposes, if you look, the same time last year, we were, we were only down one million, six eighteen. Like I said, now we're down three million, eighty-two. So if you go on down, you've got estimated collections, seven million, three ninety-five, seven nineteen. That is the real estate, and that is with the seven cent increase. The first half of public service corporations is four million, nine fifty-one, nine twenty-four. And again, that is with the seven cent increase. So you can see then I've deducted, so that's what we estimate to collect in May and June. We, you can see I've already collected a hundred and seventy-eight thousand of that amount in April, so that leaves us remaining balance of twelve million, one sixty-nine, one oh four. So if we take that, minus the three million we're already in the hole, we will have nine million left in the bank, if you hold true with these other deductions you've already committed for. Now, basically, what, what we're saying, I said that nine million is actually, has the whole seven cents. If we take out the five cents that we were just talking about, the three to debt service and the two for the other, that only leaves two million, I mean, two percent in that nine million. So it basically would only come up to be eight hundred, or eight million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand. So it's actually nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that we're actually collecting for those other two funds that would be moved over out of that balance. That would be your five cent, five percent, or five cents increase that we would move to the other funds. Okay, you can see by the next schedule, you've got a cash investment balance, and then you've got the monthly variance. So we're going to kind of show you how the money came in and out each month. And you can see where we started out at fourteen million last year, and got April, May, and June, we came down the three million, five ninety-three. Then we went up by seven million, one ninety-five. Then we came down four hundred and fifty-two thousand. If you, by the time you just look at that each month, that's how our cash flow, you can see from there on until you hit October, we're, we pretty much stay negative. That means we only collect those two times of the year, basically, from the real estate taxes and the personal, and the personal property and everything. So if you look, you can see where we came from fourteen million, nine seventy-five, down to the ten million, seven forty-two, and it shows where we're down four million, two thirty-three in the variance. And if you flip the page one more, I've got a few things highlighted for you. You can see that April through June, last year, we came out three million, one forty-nine, and that's what we had to use, left over, to get us on through to Au- or October. Well, you can see July, August, September, we used three million, nine, over what we collected in those months. So that's why I'm saying, when I'm talking about that high, it sounds like a high cash balance. You've got to come and bring it forward to September. We don't use almost four million, and then we don't collect again until October. You can see we were only up by six million, nine twenty-five after all the expenditures. So, and then you can see the rest of the months, all the way down through April, are all negative. So we're using the cash that we have in the bank at that time. So it comes up to the decrease of four million, two thirty-three. I know I went through that pretty fast, a lot of big numbers, but there's any questions?
I have a question. Would you comment on this? You have over here the public schools still, at the end of April, had three million, seven forty-seven. How does that compare to last year when they had extra money that they did all the free days?
Well, you can see there, it was four million, one ninety-three last year.
So about four hundred thousand less is all. So they should still have funds.
Yeah, I think you were down five hundred thousand this last time, which put about that difference right there.
At million or so.
Yeah.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'm just curious, do you have that ten percent unclassified or calculated in this?
Yes. In, in what I expect to have estimated collections remaining. I'm basing it on our normal collection rate for just first half will be about a little over ninety percent. Then we will collect the rest in the second half and a little bit after. We will eventually get up to about a ninety-eight percent collection rate. But it doesn't happen in the first two months. We do a lot of collection measures after that to get it on up. So I'm just looking at, trying to show you where you're going to be at the end of the year, come, into June.
Any questions for yours?
Madam Chairman, of course, what I heard you say is that at the end of the tax season, we will be at the ninety-eight percent collection rate?
By next year, I will have it at ninety-eight. It usually takes about a full year, and that's on the previous year. It will usually take about a, a year of our collection measure to go back and pick up everything from people and, and have them pay. So usually you can figure by October, or the first half, when May goes out, we will have about a ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent on the previous years.
And guess what concerns me about that? On this tax increase, real estate was projected at ninety-eight point thirty-seven percent, which is a hundred and eighty-five thousand, ninety-four dollars. Is that a legitimate number? Is that the number we should be projecting the tax increase on? Or if it's lower than ninety-eight point three seven, are we in, going to be trouble again next year in revenue collection on real estate?
Well, I think they were basing the ninety-eight percent on a full year, because your full year, it starts here in May, but then it goes all the way through back again to another May. So, but your hundred and eighty-nine thousand is based on ninety percent collection for the, each half. So it would be a little more the second half.
A hundred and ninety thousand is based on ninety percent?
Yes. Of what we build out this May. That's what I, I calculated based on what we build just in April, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. That's just on real estate. That's not on a public service corporation. Public service corporation, you configure as a hundred percent all the time.
Well...
So you got to look at them two different ones.
On the projection, for tax increase, it was on the projected ninety-eight point three seven. It wasn't projected a hundred percent.
Well, it's... We would never be at a hundred percent. Ninety-eight percent, best we would do between this half, billing, the first billing to the next year's billing. So we're going to look at a whole year collection in there.
And if we look at a whole year's collection, and it is less than a hundred percent, then we're going to collect back taxes, we're going to collect the interest. So potentially, it could be higher.
Yeah, I mean, you can look at the penalty and interest that we collected this year. We only budgeted three hundred and seventy-five thousand last year, and I've collected five hundred and nineteen thousand. So we are over budget by a hundred and twenty-five thousand now. That, you know, I can't count on that every year, but that's, you know, that's where we are. So yes, it can be made up in other places. It just, like I said, it's hard to say with delinquent collections, what year. You got to remember, we're getting ready to cut off a year in June, starting with a new year on these, on these numbers, on our, on our calculations. But we're talking about a percentage rate of collections that's going to cross over two different years. And that kind of gets a little bit messy.
I guess the first adjustment I mind is, there's more collected than we anticipated on the penalty tax and penalty. And then we know that we collected an extra amount from the Riddick jail. We collected an extra amount from CNN, but yet we're still short. Just, I just have problems.
If you did so well collecting, then maybe the collections will be down then. Because you made a dent in the, in the outstanding balances.
Yes. You know, we have judicial sales approximately every six months. We've been doing that for several years now, so that kind of keeps everybody up to date. You know, they know we're going to be doing, you know, going forward with procedures if they don't pay. So yeah, we, we've collected a lot of back taxes. So that's why I was only basing what I know went out with the bills, and figuring that I'll collect about ninety percent in May and June. Now, the other ten or eight percent I'll collect through the year of that. So they'll fall into that next year.
That's one of the questions I had line by line. I noticed where there was an estimate on what we would collect from surplus sales. And, and maybe some of that was from the sheriff's department.
That is all sheriff. That's not, that's not my sales. No, ours goes into our administrative costs. And it goes, it goes towards tax revenue when I sell it for taxes. If that's where, it's showing up in your revenue. So if we sold anything and collected those back revenue, it would make my revenue, you know, our collections look higher.
That's just one more item that I heard today, that we had an increase at this current year.
But it, I think the problem was the fact that our budget, you know, we kind of reached for the sky, and it, you know, kind of overreached. Because I'm still showing, and I'm sure Mike will get into this with you later, but I'm still showing just in general property taxes, we, I'm estimating we're going to be down one million, one hundred and forty thousand. You know, but that's... You know, but that's, with that 2% increase, I was actually showing 1.473 beforehand. So, that's with that 300 and some thousand that we're going to allocate for the 2% increase, or 2 cents increase. But I'm still showing us way down from the budget. And then you've got to look at those other items, like your regional jail and things like that, or helping to make up for that 1,140,000.
Are you saying that you're projecting what you're seeing, that we will collect from real estate is down, is lower than what we're seeing here, revenue to us today?
No, I'm saying what, what you all approved in your budget last year, we are down right now in the collections of what we.
You're talking about the current year, not what we're projecting?
Current year, not what you, no, I'm not talking about projection. I'm just talking about right where we're at right now. So, yeah, I'm looking, now, when I say 1,140,000, I'm saying that's just in your general property taxes. Like I said, you've still got some over collections in the regional jail and a few other places that we know were coming out, you know, to, to the good. So, we've kind of, you know, we're using some of the other funds to help make up, but you can't change the fact that our, you know, our tax revenue budget was too high last year. And, you know, and that's one thing you've got to be careful of when we're saying, well, we're going to replace a million dollars or 944,000. Well, where's the revenue coming from? It's easy to say, well, let's just, we get more revenue. But that doesn't make the revenue come in.
Right.
Okay? I can only do, you know, as much as we can. And just because we increased revenue to try to create, you know, to eliminate a shortfall, does it mean that's what's going to happen? And that's what's happened to us, I think, now we're catching up. And, you know, somewhere along the line, you have to look at what you've actually collected. And like I said, I'm probably stepping on toes here. This is probably more Mike's area of expertise, but I've just been preparing some of these numbers, so.
And what I might say is, Doris has been involved with our projections for this year, for the fiscal year '20 also. So, we feel very good about those projections.
We have corrected what I think was, you know, some overreaches in the past. I think we're bringing them back in line this year again, which is another reason we're a little shorter. We've cut, 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 but we're still short. But, you know, we're also cutting revenue from what we've had in, or what we thought we were going to get in the past. So.
You, you said correcting some overreaches that we had in the past?
Well, when I say overreaches, your budget, you know, that you all approved last year, I think was a little high in your revenue anticipation. And now it's coming to fruition, it just not there. So, yeah.
How, how does that happen?
I'm treasurer. I'm not, I'm not your budget person. So, you know, that, that was up to you all, when you all worked on your budget last year. I did not see the budgets last year before you all got them, before you approved them. So, I'm not going to step on anybody to say who, you know, who set what. I wasn't involved in it at all. I have been a little more involved this time because I've been helping out before my came and since Mike's come, and then since you hired a new finance director, I've just kind of been kind of guiding a little bit, giving them the historical part. I'm, I'm the historian of the courthouse, I guess. Been there so long. Do you might have any other questions?
We'll be getting a budget variance at, when the auditors do their report, and you look at line by line. We based a lot of things on what had happened in the past, and things are not as good as counties that were the last two or three years.
So. That's, that's basically true. I think a lot was, you know, because of personal property and machinery and tools, the assessments just were not there. So, you know, you can't, you can, you can look at your previous year and say, oh, we're collecting, collecting this, this, this. Then all of a sudden, those assessments are no longer there, then there's nothing there to collect. But if you based your budget on previous years, then yes, it's very easy to get over because usually he won't know, you've already set your budget, and he doesn't even do those, you know, we don't even do tax tickets for machinery and tools and personal property until September. So, that's long after you've set your budget. So, it's very hard to, you know, sometimes it can get bad as far as, you know, knowing how much to assess.
On machinery and tools, is there anticipation of it being close to the same, or are we expecting another shortfall?
You want to, you've talked to the commissioner about that.
We, we, we do have a shortfall from what was projected this year. Next year, in fiscal year '20, we have reduced the machinery and tools significantly based on some of the collection issues that have been out there. There have been some issues with people not reporting that their machinery was idle when they should have. It's been included in the projections, and we have not included those in the projections for next year. That's.
And some of the assessments that they did have, and they, we've had lawsuits filed against the county, or the commissioner and myself, that they were bad assessments. So, they don't have to pay until the court case goes through. So, we haven't been able to sell, I guess Karen can answer more about that, but that all is just, you know, you can't anticipate them just not paying it. It, it was part of our assessment, but they just don't pay.
And these assessments are being done as reports come in on personal property and, merchant capital and this. And so, they'll go out, and that's the money we'll collect next May, but, well, in December.
September.
Yeah. So, that would be, you know, you've got a timing difference there. You're dealing with old numbers sometimes.
Right. You're, you're basing your budget on basically last year's numbers, because your new numbers will not be out there until September and October.
Yeah.
But then it's following the year.
And that's the, and that is once a year, while our real estate is twice a year.
Right. So, that, that, that kind of misses everything else. Like I said, when you're dealing with estimates, it's best that, you know, you want to have a little bit of cushion. We've done away with all of our cushion over the years now, and so we are, you know, we're at the bottom line here. Like I said, we've got to look at it and get everything back into a realistic line with the economic times we're dealing with here. And, you know, the, the taxes that we used to collect, you know, the half a million to a million, million and a half for coal companies is just simply not there anymore. And so, we've got to learn how to adapt and live on what is there, what is the assessments. Because, you know.
We've got to live on less. Where I talked about how we cut, made cuts, but also our total numbers have came down.
Exactly.
My papa used to say, tighten your belt.
Shouldn't spend more than you have come in.
Sorry.
Okay, any other questions for? Then, okay, then let's go back to our, I've lost mine. Okay, we need to discuss the fourth quarter appropriations.
Right now, based on discussions with Doris and with Sonia and myself, we are anticipating we're going to be approximately 500,000, $950,000 short on our revenues for this fiscal year '19.
This is ending June 30th.
At, at, ending June 30th. We are recommending that, that with this appropriation that we have tonight, that we reduce the general fund appropriation by $950,000. And go to the next slide. What, these are the major contributors to where that money is coming from. There are actually some budgets that have to go up just to meet what their actual expenses are this year. But as you can see, out of, out of my office, we're, we're taking 99,500 out. Legal services is 20. The courthouse, we, we had some things that were budgeted that we didn't have to do. We didn't just put them off, we didn't have to do them. We're saving social services between the building and savings that social services has had. We're going to have 130,000 savings there. And we're asking that the, the school board contribute 400,000 to the savings also. That would give it, get us to the $950,000 savings that we need to have in this appropriation.
So, do you have a suggestions, you're saying like the general fund?
The, the general fund would be decreased by 950,000 because the appropriation to the school fund is included in that also. So, the, the, if you look at the appropriation, it's on the second page, the 3.227,391 for the general fund, takes out the entire 950,000. The instruction budget for the school fund, and again, the, we're only, but we've got it broken down into different things, but the actual thing, reality to it is, we give the school the money, and how they break it up is, is totally up to them.
So, the yellow is with the, the reduction already?
That's correct.
Okay.
If we approve that appropriation, we will be within, we should stay within our budget this year and not have to get into fund balance to, to meet our budget. And I have discussed the possibility of this happening with the superintendent of the schools. Actually, I told him we needed more than 400,000, but the latest projection, once we brought April into it, that's where we, where we ended up. He was anticipating that we were going to ask for about 600,000.
And if we go out, you know, we do go requesting additional funds to do the social services building, then we need to also keep our credit running, and this will maintain that we will get stewards and then to spend money we didn't have. Just because you've got a budget, that money doesn't come in for that budget, you can't keep spending. I mean, like, if you're, if you're working and your, your hours get cut down at work, what do you do? You have to say, well, boy, I can't eat out this week. I have to do cuts in my budget, or because I don't, I don't have the money coming in. So, we don't have the money coming in to pay these expenditures in this month and not draw down and create havoc on our fund balances. Any questions about this? Do I hear a motion to put this on the board, the appropriation of the items in yellow on this quarterly appropriation before?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that appropriate to just refer to what's on this page?
Yes, we have to make that part of the minutes and part of the record.
Okay, any discussion?
I'm chairman.
Yes.
Again, I can support this. This is a double planning on the school system. We're taking 944,000 out of next year's budget, and now we're taking 400,000 away from them in this last quarter of this year. That's 1.3 million that we're taking away from schools. That should be our economic development key to bring industry and business and people into Wines County. And we're sitting here cutting it, just like it was butter. Things are tough.
Any other comments? Maybe we have a roll call.
Supervisor Atkins.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Robbins.
Yes.
Supervisor Rivers.
No.
Supervisor Schoolcraft.
Yes.
Supervisor Banks.
Yes.
Supervisor Castle.
Yes.
Supervisor Lunsford.
Yes.
Chairman Kilgore.
Yes. Okay, then the next item is, we do not need to, to recess, so we need to adjourn.
Right.
So, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We are finished.